Yeah.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
How's it going?
Okay. What does that mean, Russell?
Russell? How's it going?
All of your dog and his pet love. Alright.
I'm saying like wireless.
Come on you.
I'm up to you.
You can move on.
What, no pressure?
David.
No, no?
I've reapply.
You're on a railman? You're loose?
Yeah, they told me I am.
How's your car? John? Car.
You hear that?
Well, they have one, really have one.
Look.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it. I have your slides. Yeah, but I need, you need a clicker or do you want to?
You got it.
I don't have the clicker. I just got it.
Oh, if you got a clicker.
Councilmember D. Working will not be here for work session. He will be here for formal.
Yeah, Will said he'd be late for work sessions. Good presentation.
I'm all by myself.
Yeah, I know, I agree with her.
I'm not feeling much.
Appreciate this, uh, is this working? Oh, is that working? You ready? You guys ready?
Yes, yes.
Test content, oh, there we go, okay. Appreciate this item, the first item coming up with the winter weather coming. See, like this is a timely matter, so thank you for moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. And on behalf of planning and engineering this evening, I want to introduce Clint Link, our engineering services director, Director of Engineering Services, who's going to talk to us about undergrounding. And this is a very important topic as we move into the winter months. As many of you know, sometimes during January, February, we have our worst winter seasons. And that's when we have events where we lose power, have lots of trees down, everything that comes about because of our weather. We do get a lot of ice, and we want to talk tonight about the importance of undergrounding. Our partners for Duke Energy are here with us this evening, as well as I'd like to recognize our city engineer, Paul Dow, and our engineer that oversees our undergrounding program in the city. So we thank them for being here this evening and helping to make this presentation this evening for you. Clint's going to talk about the residential undergrounding program, and then I'll chime in when we go into the commercial undergrounding program, at which point we'll talk about our corridor planning for the city and why commercial undergrounding is important to our overall community plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to Clint to get started on our residential undergrounding program.
Alright, thank you. Everybody hear me okay? Um, I want, before we get started, also recognize Shannon mentioned Duke Energy, but Brendan Crawford here with Duke Energy is joining us. Also want to give a special thanks to Matt Epper and Karen Crawford and just the whole O and B team for the work that they do, just helping us with this program, managing the financials. It's, uh, it's, it's complicated on financial side of collecting, doing the collections and working with Duke. So it's a total team effort here, but we're pleased to be here today to talk about this. Really what we're looking to do today is provide a little bit of a just recap of the history of the program for those who maybe have not heard it or it's been a while. We do want to talk about our residential part of the program and some recommendations we have for that, as well as our commercial program. Give examples of projects we've, successful projects we've done, but also kind of look ahead at the projects we feel like need to be considered as we move forward with the program. Okay, just real quick on project timeline. So winter storm of 2005 was a very devastating ice event storm that we had. You can see some of the pictures from that. But I think we had, um, I can't remember the number of people that were without power, but I know it was, it went on for several, there was some people out without power for a couple of weeks. There were people we were having to relocate them to hotels and put them up until their power could get restored in their homes. It was a natural disaster in a lot of regards to our city. It had big impact, and that precipitated the, um, the starting this utility program. It was identified that we needed to come up with a program to improve the liability. The city manager and the mayor and city manager and council directed the city manager to form a utility advisory committee, which was comprised of city staff, representatives of Duke, other utilities, AT&amp;T were part of that committee. And basically, that committee met over the course of about a year and a half to develop recommendations of what a program could look like to what the options were for addressing the events we saw in that winter storm, but also just improving reliability overall for our citizens. It was really 2009 where City and Duke collaborated to develop the Weather the Storm Program is ultimately what it, it developed to be called and went into effect in 2009. Just a little bit about the program. Again, it essentially started in 2010 is when we first did our first project. There's, there's, there's really two parts to the program. There's a residential service line conversion component, and then we have our commercial corridor projects where we look at undergrounding Duke distribution lines along those corridors. Since the program first started, we've had right at 4,800 residential lines applications submitted. We average about 400 applications a year, and right now, particularly over the last three years, we're seeing about 100, 180 to 200 projects actually done through that residential program. What was, what was done to develop the program and the funding for the program is essentially the franchise fee with Duke was increased, and it went from 4% to 5%, and that additional 1% that was increased was dedicated to the underground program. So the city takes 1% of that franchise fee collections from Duke in the city, and that's dedicated to the undergrounding program, pays for the administrative staff work and other administrative costs, as well as the implementation of relocating lines. What was great about the program is Duke does match the city with that program, and so they put a half a percent of their franchise fee towards, towards that program. Really what that amounts to is it generates about $1.2 million in city funds annually. And the way the, the program was developed is we talked about those two components, the residential and the commercial. What was decided is we would put 80% of that funding towards our commercial corridor projects with the other 20% going towards the residential.
And that's by, Clint, that's by the original ordinance that it's an 80/20 split?
2009.
And Clint, this is, this is for the lines from the transformer to the house, if you're correct?
Um, what it is, is the service line. I mean, we're going to talk a little bit about that because that's a part of our recommendations of things we want to consider with the program. It's really that last line from the last pole to the house, which is not always necessarily the transfer to that.
So if the program was designed to prioritize residential, how did we get to a decision where we put 80% on commercial and only 20% to residential?
Um, I can't, can't speak to how it was decided to make that split. It was, it was designed to improve just overall, the goal of the program was to improve just overall reliability of electrical system. It was, there was a focus on, and we do have the, the report from, there was a report generated by the Utility Commission that kind of, kind of laid out the case for, for developing the program and the options for how you could develop it. It did not go as far as making the recommendations of how much you put in residential versus how much you put in.
As you'll see a little bit, we, we did a lot of research. We had a citizens committee that studied this stuff and brought back to us. Duke is more interested in the major lines which go down the corridors. They're the ones that get hit by the buses, get hit by the trucks. When they go, when, when one of those lines on the gust road goes out, when the poles on the gust road, it docks out hundreds and hundreds of homes. So the priority was, in terms of reliability, was the corridors. We like it too, from an economic development standpoint, for our corridor improvements, obviously. Making those areas work a lot better. And the residential, to find out in this thing, it's very hard to do because of, you know, people's personal landscaping. Just, it's a complicated thing. That's why a lot of people just don't qualify for the program or they don't want it. It's also important to know that in residential areas, all new development, undergrounding is required. So going forward, since about 2000, early 2000, you're required to have undergrounding. In fact, if you build a house, you're required to make that last line underground too. So we're hitting it from all different directions.
And when we first started the program, we had very few home owners pay. And so we had, we had to build up, we had to gain their trust in order for them to realize that we would pay a certain, in most cases, it's the majority for the homeowner. Uh, our commercials, um, businesses, it wasn't quite the majority for them. That's why we had to put in more for them. So, I mean, we, trust me, we're not electricians. We couldn't figure this thing out on our own. So we had, we had a lot, a long time discussion about that. And that was the reason it's 80/20, Sarah. And if I feel if we ever, because we decided that, so if we feel that we need to change that, and we need to just look at it and review it, it's going to help. But with everybody having their lines required to be attached, now we may even reduce that.
Well, I mean, I understand what the mayor was saying about, if we focus on, say like a node approach. If we're focusing on the nodes and make sure the nodes are stable and secure then that maybe alleviates some of the problems that residential might have. Didn't mean to take up that much.
No, and that's, that is a good question, and I think the mayor makes a very good point. When those major lines, distribution lines along those corridors are taken out, it affects thousands of people versus the residential. Typically dealing with a single residential home, sometimes a group of residential homes. So they definitely have a bigger impact when those lines are damaged.
It may be though, that now that we're 15 years down the road, it doesn't, I still am cold thinking about that when we lost that power the other day. But, um, we're probably quite a different city now in terms of our lines, how much has been buried, how much hasn't. And I feel like, you know, we keep building a pot towards commercial, and we bury tranches of lines because we can't use it on anything else. It's designated as commercial, whereas it may be time to look at building it in, you know, both pots to see how much could build for communities. And I'm sure that's data that's gettable with some study, but I just, I do think we're in kind of a different place now than we were in 05 in terms of where the greatest need might be for undergrounding.
I will say this, on that 80/20 split, we've done a lot of good commercial projects. We'll go through a few of those, and we typically spend that money. The residential, the money that's dedicated to residential typically don't see that money spent.
And that, my sense is, is because the cost has been more, the, the community or residential need for their skin in the game is too much to justify.
Cost of that money increases, that's what we, one of the.
Correct, that's what, that's what, yeah, why this came up. Cost has gone up. We haven't checked, we have changed the formula sometime. But we also, it's always also a matter of persuasion, and again, a lot of people just don't want it once they look at it because they have their gardens being drug up and that, that kind of thing, so some people don't want to do it.
So just to, just to kind of paint the picture a little bit, this is what we're talking about. We've got the major, the power grid or power source here. It comes through the heavy transmission lines to a substation. Hudson Street over by Unity Park is a good example. We have a substation there right on Hudson Street, and you can kind of see how the lines come to that and then feed out of that. You've got these distribute, what I call the distribution lines, that kind of typically run along the roads. They're your major lines. That's what we cover with the commercial side of the program. And then you have the individual service lines that come to the, to the individual residences, sometimes a group of residences. There's the transformer you're referring to. Sometimes it'll come from a transformer to a pole, and then it'll go from this pole to the house. That's what we want to talk a little bit about as well. This is a good example here, this, these two houses are fed underground from this pole right here. You can see there's a ground mounted transformer there. So this is just kind of a graphic that shows you what we're talking about. But the residential program covers these service lines, and the commercial program, it covers the major lines along with the corridors.
And it would cover that even if it's a corridor in a neighborhood? Like, pick a residential street. The commercial portion would cover those headers?
I do think the, the original resolution was focused on our commercial corridors, the major commercial corridors, but certainly.
And Clint, I ask the question because most of the outages that we've had in our neighborhood are because of that line from the, back to the house, whatever that number was. Uh, but the line back behind the houses, that figure line.
Yeah, yeah. Just another picture, kind of shows you the, the service lines highlighted in orange here, you know, from the main distribution line. This is kind of a before picture, and then you, you do the undergrounding, and you kind of see the cleanup result you get with those.
And the Duke people are here, I just want to emphasize, we asked Duke pointedly, so what's the most, what's the most significant important thing we could do to get electricity back on again? They said corridors, so we had the, the big ones that were, it's all crazy when a truck hits them. And second, absolutely, the service line. The more people would have their service line buried, we have faster recovery because it's that, that's the last thing they fix, by the way. It takes up a lot of manpower and time. Still, it's diverse away from fixing the total problem.
So this is just kind of summarizing the residential, more pictures of that storm. But, you know, this is essentially what it looks like, a typical example of an overhead feed. Line comes in overhead, it goes down to the meter, and then feeds the house. Of course, you do the undergrounding, and now everything is being fed from, from underground. You know, basically what this does, it, it, it just improves the reliability. It allows Duke to get the, restore the power in these neighborhoods quicker. And as to the mayor's point, Duke doesn't have to spend time on individual service lines to the houses. They can focus on the main streets and then move on to the next main street. The other thing that's important to recognize is, a lot of times when you have a situation like this and the tree takes down that service line, it's often going to do damage to this meter and to the actual, to the part of the line that goes to the residential meter. Any of that rework that has to be done for that meter, if the meter gets damaged, the meter canister or the line coming to it, everything from that meter up to this connection point right here is the responsibility of the homeowner. So you get a ice storm and it does, it does damage to a service, the homeowner is responsible for getting this repaired on, which means they have to call an electrician, get them out there. Often that's very difficult to do when you're, you're in a storm event because a lot of people are dealing with a similar issue. And Duke could maybe get the line restored, but until the, the private property side of the, the meter is, is corrected, they still won't have power. So there's some cost and liability that, you know, the homeowners have in this as well. So it's really just getting these lines underground, it improves the reliability. It's just less lines that are in the air that are subject to ice hanging on, tree limbs falling, trees falling, that sort of thing, so. So what we want to really kind of look at is what we feel like are some recommendations that we want to consider. Again, our current subsidy that we provide is $1,500 for burying that service line. This is split equally between the city and Duke. The city also offers a $300 subsidy towards converting the meter box. A lot of these homes that are fed from overhead lines, the meter, canister of the meter has to be switched out to receive an underground feed. Not all of them, but a good many of the meters do have to be converted. And the city has extended additional costs to go towards that meter conversion. That's a cost that the city provides, only Duke doesn't participate in that. But as we've kind of alluded to, you know, these costs have, have, just general costs have increased tremendously since we developed the program, and we're, I think the average cost is just a little over $2,900 per, per home. I will say, every home is different. You've got some yards that it's just a straight shot to the meter, it's right through the front yard, through the grass area, pretty, pretty simple, less, low-impact type construction. You got others that there's, there's all kinds of landscaping, aesthetics, hardscape improvements, pools, that sort of thing in the yards that have to be worked around. So the cost can vary pretty significantly from house to house, but from what Duke has seen over the years, the average cost we're averaging around $2,950. Um, that does include the meter box.
Is that, okay, so I still, I know there's no way to bury the line in my house for $2,900, but ours could be extreme. So my question is, that $2,900 figure, and this may belong to Duke, did they develop that based on those that took advantage of the program and had it done? Because those that, you know, maybe Duke came out and gave a quote of $10,000, chose not to do it, and they're not weighed into creating that average of $2,900. So is $2,900 the average of all estimates or the average of those projects completed?
And with that, I'm going to refer to Brendan on, on that question.
I'd be glad to answer that. That is the average cost period, the average cost received.
We, we don't have a microphone, I'm sorry.
While he's making his way up, I said that's $2,900 minus $1,800 in subsidies. $1,500 for the service line and then $300 for the meter box.
And did the $2,900 cover the meter box?
So the $2,900 is the Duke cost estimate, which does not include the meter box. The meter box is the subsidy, right about sitting. But $2,900 is the average cost of all some folks that did or did not proceed. More folks proceeded that were seeing that be less than $1,500 amount, as you can imagine, because it would be covered by all split between Duke and City. Is all the work done by independent contractors or do you all think that? It's a blend. I would say mostly it's conducted by our contract crews as far as the burying of our service lines.
So this leads to our recommendations. What we would like to have the flexibility to do, it's not always required, but certainly have the flexibility to extend the program to not only cover the service line, but also when there's an additional line that maybe needed to be undergrounded, get it back to that transformer. Sometimes that could be two poles back. Like to have, the, the, right now, the ordinance and the program doesn't really address that. We've been able to accommodate that with some requests. Be, be nice to just have the program updated to specifically allow, allow for that.
And do we have the information of, of what we've done that had to have more than one unit?
Um, we do have, we do have some project examples. I'd probably have to pull those. I know we've done. That's really, um, applied to group residential projects where we've been able to look at more than one house in a, in a project. Should have further explained that our residential projects can be a single residential house or we can combine efforts to a group residential project. And a lot of the times where we've done that, where we've gone beyond just that service line, we've gone on a group, group residential.
So if we double the subsidy and we're still looking at the same amount that's coming in from that 1%, so we're going to end up basically having the number of, the number of applications that we actually approve every year?
We, we would expect more participation. We're not, we're not recommending at this time, or we, we happen to look at it, we need to. We're not recommending changing that percentage of what goes to residential versus what goes towards the commercial program. Like I say, the residential program, we haven't not been spending that full amount in any of the years since we started this.
Okay.
But I will say this, that is something we'll have to watch because if we start getting more participation, that, those funds will start, we would expect that to start to happen. Maybe we may have to look at that, that proportion.
Okay. And Clint, how, how does this apply to multifamily work?
Um, does not apply to multifamily. I, I stand corrected. We did do, we've done some condominiums. I'll show you here. This is a great example, right? We'll go back. This was the McDaniel Heights condominium, so this is multifamily. You can see the before and after picture. I think there was 40 units in this complex. The total cost of undergrounding this, and it also included the communication lines as well as doing some lighting upgrades. Total cost was around $18,000.
Was that directly tied directly to the sidewalk redo?
Um, there is, we, anytime you, the restoration work is included in those assessments and cost estimates, oftentimes that's what kind of gives the cost.
I think it happens at the same time.
Yeah.
How do we calculate the subsidy? Do you just deal one subsidy, or one subsidy of $1,500? Or do we actually give 20 subsidies of $50?
You, you can look, we kind of evaluate it different ways. We, we know what we would apply to a, a single residential house. We, we would just look at total cost and if we can make the justification to do it based on how much we would pay with the 40 units. In this case, it was very easy. We didn't pull them out for, because 12 of these units would have been, you know, had their own subsidy.
$60,000.
So if, if a given block, if a given block of residential, you know, had 10 houses on it, and everyone on that block said, yeah, we all want to bury our lines, then included on top of that would the city? then included on top of that, would the city bury the headers that feed the individual ones? Do we have anything like that where it takes the whole block to get them to do the main headers, the main feeders? Nothing like that?
I don't think so.
What triggers us to do that? I mean, what prompts us to bury those in a residential area?
Just that would actually be taking kind of a more, what the program that we typically do on a commercial corridor, applying to McDaniel Street, McDaniel Heights or, you know, one of the neighborhood collector.
Have we done it on any neighborhood collector roads?
I don't think so.
It's hard. It's clear. You may want to do it, but then three others don't want to do it.
Well, but the collect, you know, I get, yeah, you've got to do the individual drops to justify doing the feed. My sense was we never had enough money built up in the pot to do things like that. To do Webster Road or McDaniel or the cost was, I mean, we did the residential around, you know, those lines around Unity Park, which had residential there, but that was.
If you get into some of our neighborhoods, we have a lot of trees. Undergrounding trees don't go together very well.
Overground trees don't go together.
North Main Street would be a nightmare.
So when we do this undergrounding, do they do the cable lines too?
The program does not cover the communication on the residential side. On the commercial side, we do underground the communication lines for the on our commercial corridors because it has to be pulled all together. So we have, we have incorporated that into the commercial. And that's what we, oftentimes we do. We're able to coordinate getting the conduits put in at the same time. A lot of times on these residential projects, we see them being done in conjunction with a homeowner, you know, redoing or renovating their house, doing landscaping. It's a great time.
And it's important that too. I mean, we're the only ones doing this. If you live in the county, no one's doing this.
Well, if that should have the cable lines and those other lines, have they coordinated a little bit better? Because the only time I was ever involved is when my neighbors had called the other people and Duke is standing there waiting. They've been waiting for weeks and the other people just don't come to move their stuff. Has that gotten better?
I'd like to say we're getting better.
Okay, is there any way we can probably have a little meeting?
Progress is slow on that.
When we do changes? Because that's got to happen. There's got to be some communication there because it, particularly in one of my historical neighborhoods, it was just a nightmare. People say, we're standing here on the corner waiting for them to come again. I said, oh my God. So something's got to happen. So there's better communication. I mean, Duke couldn't run there every day. It was a problem. And these are people who've been there. These are not newcomers. These are people who've been there forever. And we really had a bad problem when we had storms because all those pretty trees, oh my God, everybody, nobody found.
So how many have we been averaging a year of residential?
It's under 200.
Very work intensive too. It takes a long, what is so many we can do a year? Those other things we're into. And then people start down, in my experience, there's been frequent people who start down the process and they change the mind. They say they don't want that tree removed. So it's a very intense, very work intensive.
There can be a lot of back and forth.
Lucky to get it out if you do.
And then how many are we getting?
I think around 400.
So about 50% hit rate.
So if we increase the subsidy to 3,000 and we're paying harder than Duke, what will the breakdown be? Still saying?
So how do we? When does O M B get to say how much?
We got their approval.
So this gets, this is just increasing the subsidy out of the existing undergrounding fund. We're still getting the same percent fee. Granted, the cost of power is going up, so, okay.
And we'll continue to monitor the fund. And we'll start seeing, I mean, we're hoping we'll see a lot more participation than we've seen over the last few years. And we start seeing where we need to adjust how much money we're contributing towards the residential component.
And part of this is a public relations move. We try, every winter, we try to rev it back up again. We used to put notices on everyone's trash cans, but now that we have automatic trash can, they copy. And the notice is like we used to. But it's one of these things we just every now and then need to take a deep breath and just kind of start over again and informing people about how great this program is.
And that's what I was going to ask was communications and advertisement. How do we do that?
We've got a few slides here at the very end to talk about how we're going to rebrand this program and Beth and her team. Did not recognize that in the intro, but her team has been very helpful. Not only with this presentation, but just our communication. Good strategy there, so we're excited about that. Kind of moving into the commercial undergrounding. This is again, looking at what traditionally they have in the commercial corridor streets, your Haywood Roads, your Augusta Streets. We do these projects. Typically, we look for, when there's major redevelopments occurring on these corridors, when we've got a, a lot of times you'll see these are recommended projects that we do through our master planning efforts along these commercial areas. When we do streetscape improvements, we try to look for opportunities to underground the lines and just through our corridor improvement program. We obviously are very excited about any kind of, anytime we can get public-private partnerships to go towards this. So those are all opportunities, you know, where we look at in commercial corridors. You can kind of see the breakdown of how this is structured. Again, the city and Duke will split the cost of the electrical component of the undergrounding 50/50. The city does pay the, any costs associated with relocating the commercial, communication lines. If we get into other enhancements like lighting, mast arm signal poles, those sort of things. Those are 100% paid by the city. But all the electrical part of putting in the duct banks and just the electrical wiring and electrical work that's associated would be split with the city and Duke. Typically, the way it's rolled out is the city working with Duke will hire the engineering consultant to do the plans and the design. Those plans are reviewed by Duke and developed. And we'll bid it out, put the duct bank in. And then Duke Power will come behind us with the relocation of those. Follow that with the communication company. We'll follow behind Duke, get those lines off the poles.
And how does that relationship with the communications companies work? I know there's a problem with the pole duplicity that the communications lines would be on the old poles for a long time. How are we managing that?
Well, on the commercial corridors, it's a much bigger project. The design takes us a while. We're from four, three, you know, six months sometimes just to get the design work done. So we're coordinating very closely with those, all of those utility companies as we're doing the work. So they're building it into their schedule. And I will say that the city does pay the cost of putting conduits in for the communication companies. They have been very supportive of this program and they have not charged us for their time and labor for coming out and physically relocating the lines. So there is a participation from them in that regard. But the coordination is really close on those so that we hopefully it's pretty seamless and they follow pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stallone. We're going to transition a little bit now. Clint has provided the engineering overview and we're going to kind of transition to looking at it through a planning and development lens as we start to talk about some before and afters. And one of the things that we talk about when we look at our master planning efforts for the city is how can we reduce our visual blight? That's something that we hear about a lot, especially as we work on our corridors. And two of the most impactful ways to reduce visual blight on a corridor are through good signage, having good signage, getting rid of old signs that obstruct the visual plain. And also through undergrounding, which also reduces your visual plain. And so we're going to go through some before and after pictures that Clint and his team put together to talk about kind of how this really helps from a master planning effort as well in terms of helping with our communities. So the first one we're going to look at is Haywood Road, one of our most successful areas that we've had with undergrounding. As you can see, the removal of the transmission lines were one of the catalysts that led to additional public investment. So not only did we remove the transmission lines throughout parts of Haywood Road, we also added new light fixtures. We've done a major sidewalk improvement project. And one of the reasons is, is you'll look and see the space that just the poles themselves take up that hinder our ability to put in other public investments into the realm. So it hinders our ability to put in streetscape, landscaping, sidewalks. And so by removing the transmission lines, and a lot of times that's the catalyst for other investments into the public streetscape that help improve the corridor throughout. And then what that does is it leads to additional private investment. So if you look at our corridors, think about driving down Haywood Road where we've had success with undergrounding or parts of Augusta. You can start to see how private development then responds. So when we make that public investment, we see a private development, the private development community responds to that. Here's another picture right here. This is a before of how it looks. See all this visual clutter here with the transmission lines, the old poles? You can see this other signage. So through our planning efforts and engineering efforts, we've been able to, we have new poles, we have new signs, and it really does start to open up the corridor.
We do have sidewalks now on Haywood Road.
Yes, we do. And that was, that was all recommended out of the Haywood Road master plan. So these are all results of improvements, if we go back one, that were part of the Haywood Road master plan. Clint, did you want to add something?
I just added this. Haywood Road was the first project we did with the undergrounding program, commercial project. And it was done in three phases. Again, Shannon mentioned it was a recommendation of that Haywood Road master plan. And we were able to do about, I think around 3,500 feet of the road. But you can see the impact it has. But yeah, it was the first project we did, a very successful project. Nancy Lee has managed all these projects. She does fantastic, keeping the project's own schedule and the budget we've got, so.
Moving on. Moving on, this is Rutherford Road. This is our gateway into our city. And you can see how this truly did benefit from undergrounding. Here in this picture, you can't really see the signage that was hastily done or the landscaping because the overhead immediately goes to the poles. If you look at the after, you can see how much it opens this up. And then the development community responded with, you know, a nice result in what we see for our private development. And so this is an example of really reducing the visual clutter. Here, it just dominates what you see is both pedestrian and driver along Rutherford Road.
This was actually a communication line only relocation. So there was no power lines involved with that. That was just, I believe, an AT&amp;T line. We had the QuickTrip that developed, I think was one of the first developments that kind of happened out there on Rutherford Road. The Gateway House came in a few years back. And now Tommy's Ham House is redeveloping into a new restaurant. So we took advantage of all those redevelopment projects, saw this opportunity to relocate these poles. Just a good example of, again, this was 100% paid by city because it wasn't through power lines. But again, it's just overhead poles, it's clutter, and it's just cleaning up the corridor.
How far does that go up?
The gateway.
Yeah, there are a few poles up near the church by Stone, well, near Stone Avenue that we haven't been able to underground yet. They're kind of tied into the lines there on Stone Avenue. But a short gap and then there at Stone Avenue will be picked up again at Gateway.
So we'll keep moving through these in the interest of time. But this is the West Greenville Village Plaza that we, the city invested a lot of public improvements into. We've long invested in West Greenville and this was part of development of that node. The city's removal of the overhead lines was the first step in improving the visual context. You can see what we looked like beforehand. And then we have a new canvas now for private investment and public art. This piece right here, our art piece by Blessing Hancock, would not have been possible had we not removed those, the overhead lines. And so you can see how much it really did lead to a transformation. You know, it didn't take a lot of investment here, but with the removal of those lines, now you have the ability, you have business owners wanting to invest. We have new storefronts with eyes on the street. This storefront before had been closed in. We now have this opened up to the community. We have a more, this right here is now art with an improved facade, improved awnings, and then new construction. And so that's all a result of the undergrounding that the city approved as part of this project.
And then the streets, so it did come back out to the track. That saved a lot of problems right there.
That's right. By allowing, by making this area right here a public plaza area and making it into art, it also helped improve the area.
Another good example of how you can just coordinate this with a plaza or a streetscape type improvement. This project, you see, is a fairly low cost. That was just for just relocating the service lines to those commercial businesses. Similar to a residential service, these were commercial services that got relocated. We took advantage of the contractor we had on site doing all the drainage and other electrical work for the lighting and just putting in some additional conduits. Just able to capitalize our savings.
That's a, look at the impact visually that you are able to take both from the economic development perspective as well just by that $30,000 investment, what it led to in reinvestment through the private development.
Wish they could all be that cheap.
And here we are again, which this summarizes all of the good planning principles we've just talked about in terms of removing those poles and the lines. We now have new street lighting, sidewalks. You know, you now can see the landscaping. It's much more visible to the pedestrian. And this really is putting good planning principles at work here. Just what, by just reducing all of those lines, what we're able to accomplish in terms of opening up this corridor and really making it something that's inviting for both the pedestrian as well as people.
And this project was a little different where we didn't actually have to put in a duct bank for the power lines. We were able to just do it with several conduits, which saved some costs. I think there was five different communication lines that got relocated. You see all those lines on the poles there on the left that got relocated. It included a mast arm signal upgrade at Washington and Broad. And I think we actually extended some of the undergrounding down Broad and some on the backbeat as well as part of this. It was done in a couple of different phases. We started out, the first phase was down closer to the railroad in Trescocks Street. And then we were able to come back to Academy Street, to Hudson Street.
Here we are with an example of undergrounding in our C4 district and our urban core. We want downtown to draw people in to truly be an urban core. And that is accomplished through higher density, better architecture, and more inviting public spaces. Had these transmission lines not been approved, this height could not have been accomplished. And that's going to be really important as we start to urbanize the downtown community. Undergrounding is essential in order to receive the additional height and greater density. We have a lot of times when we run into issues with being able to meet the requirements for our fire trucks, our fire ladders can only go over a certain amount. And had we not removed these overhead lines, it could have limited the height of the building. We run into this quite a bit. And so as we start to urbanize, you're going to see that we would like to see more undergrounding occur because it's going to be necessary in order for us to really make the transformation from a suburban community to an urban community.
So this was part of the Falls Park Drive and Red Street project. It's done in conjunction with some streetscape initiatives on Red Street.
And here's our before and after on Augusta Street. As you can see, just by moving the poles, and a lot of times we'll be able to, and we can underground or we can move poles. And we've looked at both options along Augusta. We're going to have additional recommendations for you on Augusta. But again, just by taking all of that down, look how much it opens up these areas. And we're starting to see.
And all those signs you see, they're all gone.
They're all.
No exception.
So is going to be.
That's right.
But those poles, the ones you see in a minute, those poles are literally like three or four inches from the road. They're practically in the road for about two blocks. That's the worst section of poles on Augusta Road. And they lean, they lean like leaning tower pieces. They kind of lean into the road.
Is that the side of the street on the plan for the future?
Yep. We've got a slide for that.
We've got a slide for it. We're almost there. And then here we are at Hudson Street at Unity Park. And then here we are at Hudson Street at Unity Park. Removal of the utility poles on South Hudson Street allowed for more area to provide a broader sidewalk, as you can see, for greater pedestrian connectivity into the park. It also allowed for us to install a simplified light fixture, new street trees, which are more in keeping with the visual and environmental aesthetics of Unity Park. So once again, you can see the impact that just removing the poles had from the overall area along Hudson Street.
That total cost represents the current Phase Two that we're currently in construction, which is undergrounding from the new Welburn Street up to the north of Southern Railroad. We're under construction with that. We should have the duct bank completed here in the next few weeks. And then Duke has already lined up, working on coming in right behind us to start relocating those lines. So it's a great example. You can go out there and stand on Welburn Street, look north and see the impact that it had, and then you turn around and you can still see the poles and lines that were getting ready to relocate, just kind of see the impact that it had.
Okay, so we've reviewed where we've been successful, and now we want to turn our attention to these streets, which are recommendations for the future. So if council recall, as part of the Road Diet project planning, Rob Robinson provided some planning recommendations to visually marry the roadway. Visual indicators are important to the overall pedestrian safety, and so that's one of the things that we're looking at through here in this section of Augusta Street, is how can we reduce, there's the poles that you all were talking about that are leaning. And as part of our, we have walked, Clint and myself, I think most of the engineering team have all walked this section of Augusta. And it can be quite frightening as you're walking through this area because of how close you are to the pedestrian, I mean, to the travel lane, and you can see the poles here that have been impacted through the travel lane. So obviously, we'll talk a little bit more about the Road Diet coming up, but this is an opportunity that we have that would allow for a major improvement along this corridor through the undergrounding.
So we would coordinate this with the next phase of streetscaping on Augusta Street that we're starting to essentially getting ready to start the engineering on here in the next few weeks. And basically, we're looking at a little bit of time to get the engineering done as well as the undergrounding, you know, duct bank plan, design, coordinate that with Duke. But we've got an available balance, based on our funds that we have in our balance right now and what would be projected over the next year, we could look at doing this other side of the street. The previous slide you saw was a relocation of lines to the rear of the properties. This would be a true underground for those same three blocks of Augusta.
How much is in the fund?
I think right now the balance is right at one point.
It'll be about two point five million.
Two point five.
It doesn't sound like a lot.
Well, I'm just trying to figure, so we're looking at a multi-year project, and that's the way that we're drafting?
You have to be through the, you have to be in the next business for years for one of that.
Okay, so we have two point five, and we're getting one point two, we're up to one point two a year. Okay, so that sounds like that's on the end of a project we have.
So, and we're just now getting underway with the engineering on. So we've got, you know, we've got another dime to.
So I suppose we can mix and match on undergrounding with a little bit of relocation together.
All right. As you can see in this photo, here's our completed Road Diet, which has received overwhelming positive support from the community. But we shouldn't stop there. As part of the permanent Road Diet, we want to look at other options for the corridor. When you look at Rob Robinson's Urban Design Analysis from November of 2021, when we completed the Road Diet, it states, "Future planning should include expansion and improvement of the pedestrian zone, including landscape buffers and removal of overhead utility lines away from the curb." And as you can see, the sidewalk is very close to the travel lane, and while the speed reduction helps with that through the Road Diet, additional streetscape could go where the poles go, we've talked about that previously, which would also provide some additional barriers for pedestrians traveling along that sidewalk. So that was one of the recommendations from our Road Diet study through Rob's Urban Design Analysis, and we would like to see that come to fruition in the future.
This is actually looking south, so we're looking towards the fallen road or towards the direction of light. And on that right side of the road, I think there are like fourteen or fifteen poles. There's, I don't know how many residences ultimately that serves, but I think there's a great opportunity to at least get those poles removed and get, open up the opportunity for widening those sidewalks and improving the overhead lines to those residential houses.
Okay, so another corridor that we've been studying for, as council has asked for us to look at, is a possible Road Diet, traffic calming measures for Stone Avenue. This is a project that the city will be studying for design in this budget year. Again, notice how close the sidewalks are to the travel lane, and then there's the location of the poles, again, wider next to the travel lane. By removing these poles, it frees up space for wider sidewalks that we'd like to see along Stone Avenue and more extensive curb lawn, because we don't really have a whole lot of curb lawn on Stone Avenue in parts, we don't have any. Curb lawns, of course, are needed to provide pedestrians a physical barrier, and I have walked this sidewalk as well from front to back, and there are times where you literally feel like you're right up against the travel lane, plus you've got the pole right there, and then you can see the cars that are right up against the poles and travel lane. You can see this one's leaning, and we've had, we've had poles on Stone, cars making two. We've had poles hit on Stone Avenue within the last year.
How far up is it? Is it all the way up to Rutherford or?
Well, we're, again, this is another one, we're underway with engineering on.
Can you do a little bit?
We would incorporate this into the road, future Road Diet plans or streetscape improvement plans, and we're recommending at first, we just do to it, we can do to consolidate poles, clean up some of these overhead crossings, otherwise it just crossed the road. Certainly would look at, we can relocate.
Yeah, I mean, I would, to me, if we're looking at bearing, so Augusta and Augusta, Haywood, Unity Park, all those have had the advantage of bearing lines, with Augusta just being one side, but Stone has not had any of it. You're, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're saying, let's take some low hanging fruit for a small dollar in this year's activity to clean up the crossovers and excessive poles, but I would not want us to walk away from Stone Avenue and say, that's it, that's all we're doing through Stone, because they're already behind from what's been shared with Augusta Road, Haywood, and around the Unity Park area. And we had, I can't even remember if it was, I think it might have been a fatality, which was actually between Wade Hampton and 385, that curb. Not sure if it was a fatality, I should say. But Stone needs some attention in that area, and they haven't seen it yet. I think it's great to start with this, but I wouldn't want that to be the be all and all by any means.
I know, I'm hearing, I know we've got a streetscape, but we also have an underground project, so that sounds like two parts. Are there any others that play that we're tapping into?
So it depends on the project. So for instance, the, you know, a lot of the downtown, like the Red Street project, that was funded partially undergrounding, partially by the old tip, the economic, that's how the economic grant is funded. Some of the projects come in the form of public-private partnership agreements. So for instance, some of the developments in the west end of recent years, and they're asked for public-private partnerships of developing the utility undergrounding partnership. That also hits the old tip on the community. So it's usually just undergrounding or undergrounding and maybe a streetscape project or a public-private partnership, those are the three most relevant.
So there's three point five million that you're looking at for Augusta Road. What's the breakdown of funding for that? Because it sounds like there's a streetscaping in there, a Road Diet in there, and there's also undergrounding.
There's undergrounding, there's streetscape capital, there's streetscaping. We are also looking at, I mean, we're looking at some of the federal bill grants, Safe Streets for All grant for Augusta Street. That is, you know, kind of a big unknown, but certainly a grant we're looking to apply for next September before we apply for that, that would coincide pretty good with our design, schedule, and engineering. So there are other, there are some grant opportunities we could.
Okay, so when you say there's two point five million for the budget, we're just talking about the underground.
That's just what's accumulated in the fund. And it builds a one point two.
But it really should be a mix and match. I mean, if you look at, we're trying to focus on corridors now, make them attractive, attract investment, we're talking Wade Hampton and Stone and all of these. And if you look back at the history of downtown Greenville, how did we do that? Well, the very first, the very first thing we did in downtown Greenville years ago was undergrounding and the wars. And you can make the same case in the corridors, that if we really take a deep breath and look at the situation on all these corridors, we really want to see them attract investment and be what they should be with wide sidewalks and all that kind of good stuff. We have been a little slow to act on the underground. That's really probably the first thing we ought to figure out a way to do, and it would be a mix and matching, it shouldn't just come from the underground fund.
Again, this is our next one to talk about, is River Street, exploring undergrounding in order to expand our walkability of this area of downtown, as well as to provide for visual improvement in this section as you come into downtown. Again, your whole eye goes to the overhead transmission lines.
I think those poles are right in the middle of the sidewalk.
They are. Yeah, and it also prohibits some of our pedestrian activity along the sidewalk, which is something that we definitely would like to improve in our downtown area.
I'm at, well, let's go back to that. Is that on the left where the downtown conference center is being completed? Why would we, why would we do undergrounding before that design is reconciled?
I don't know that, I think that we would just want to look at the undergrounding for all of River Street, for the whole corridor.
But it could be a part of the bigger redevelopment.
Yeah, but I guess it goes without saying, let's not pay to underground lines along there and then dig up that line.
No, I think we would coordinate.
We would coordinate maybe of that, yes. And then finally, looking at Lawrence Road, obviously, we think that Lawrence Road is one of the most important corridors we have in the city for potential commercial growth as we're continuing to see commercial growth along Lawrence Road.
Don't say stuff like that in this all care.
This picture really, this picture really ought to be looking the other direction because it's the mountain view and the skyline view coming the other direction. It's so dramatic and beautiful, but, but for the poles of the way.
And that's just, wait a minute, Antrim Drive to 385, is that not two blocks?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's Antrim to Washington that we're calling.
It says Antrim to I-380, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm backwards, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the other way. Okay, so you could do Antrim all the way back to 385 to 80.
I think the priority would be Antrim to Washington Street.
Yeah, we had it broken down into quarters.
Quarters and quarters.
Really wanted to. White the sidewalks.
And then we've talked about Mayberry, but again, that would be addressed with future maintenance. So in the interest of time, since we're way over on our time, and I think y'all want us to get to the fun part, which is the communications plan and our next steps forward.
So yeah, we're going, we're looking at rebranding the program to power on, and really just want to do a concerted effort over these next first couple of months of the new year with, through all of our social media channels to get the communication out to the neighborhoods, to the different groups, to talk about our, you know, increased contribution towards the program and just try to gain new interest in the program. Beth and her team, they've got the website kind of teed up and ready to roll, and we would be ready to start this early next year. And then as far as the communications plan for undergrounding, we could, I think there's room for us to improve how we're bringing awareness and attention to our commercial corridors as well. It's, again, it's another method of addressing our corridor revitalization efforts. So just using, again, social media, website, before and after, all those before and after pictures, as you can see, just clearly see the difference and the impact that it had.
Let's stick the ringel G under Duke Energy, please, I'm going to be on top of Duke Energy.
We can do that.
Does the public know what last line is?
No. It will be defined to them, which we've got, you know, fax queues or mailouts.
Yes, and we'd like to thank Beth and her team for helping with our communication efforts, our marketing efforts, and for having our media partners here today to help us start spreading that word, Councilmember Stoll, about the program so that people are aware what we're offering and that we want people to participate in this program. And so the whole point of us being here today is to try to excite you all into supporting the program, but also to have the members of our public want to participate in the program.
Went way over on time, apologize for that.
Burying lines takes a lot of in-depth time.
Thank you for saying that. And that's Brendan Crawford from Duke Energy.
I was saying, you said back to questions. You have questions? Yeah, we're good. Well, no, no, sorry, we need to come back up.
Mayor, council, yes, sir, you have, well, I might have, maybe it's picking up. One item on the agenda for executive session this afternoon, purpose is to discuss contractual negotiations for the potential disposition and acquisition of city property downtown under SC Code 30 dash board dash 782. A solo second.
All fair and square.
We can take it down now, right?